WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintridge County Commission. The Fintridge County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintridge County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order, please. Please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Clark Range Junior ROTC. Color guard remain standing for the pledge of the flag by Second District Commissioner Kim Davison, and opening prayer by Commissioner Rod Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we humbly come before you today, Lord, and give you thanks for this day. Lord, we give you thanks for our community and the opportunity to serve and to help our community the best we can. Lord, we just pray that we'd, uh, everything that'd be done and said in this meeting tonight would give you all the honor and the glory and would be pleasing unto you. We ask all these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Mayor, would you please call the roll?
Mickey McDonald?
Here.
Justin Miller?
Here.
Rod Williams?
Here.
Kim Davison?
Here.
Benny Hughes?
Here.
Robert Cooper?
Here.
Lester Gooding?
Here.
Leon Stepp?
Here.
Larry Cooper?
Here.
Julie Matthews?
Here.
All present.
All present. Item number six. Consideration approval of minutes from the regular commission meeting on 9/20/2021. Hope everyone's had a chance to look over those. Is there any questions or any improvements to them?
I have one, uh, correction. Let me find it. Uh, on item number 18, uh, it says to place Harvey Stires on the ID board and that should be the planning committee.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion being made to approve the minutes as amended. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Motion is made by Commissioner Leon Stepp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Next we have the approval of two notaries. The first one is Tammy S. Cook with quality private duty, and the second one is Lyndon Smith, Fintridge County Clerk and Master. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Next we have some, about four proclamations here we do have. We sure appreciate the crowd here. Some of the commissioners said a moment ago, we wished it could be like this each county meeting, so, if we can get y'all back, it'd be wonderful. Children are welcome also. Anytime that, uh, any time that the commission meets, it's always, it's a, it's an open meeting. Uh, we try to be very transparent of everything that the commission does and they would more than welcome comments or, face-to-face comments, other than a lot of Facebook comments, we'll put it like that right there. But we certainly appreciate everyone being here today. Anytime that this commission can help in any way with the youth, they're definitely going to try to. Uh, I believe that's been noted in several cases and, but getting right along with business. We have a proclamation to start with here. One is for Sidney Adair Mitchell. The other is for David Adam Woods. Are you both here? Are both of you here tonight? Just come forward, please, if you both are here. I will read these proclamations and Commissioner Mickey McDonald and Justin Miller will present you with the proclamation. Stand, turn around if you want to, be fine. Proclamation in the Fintridge County Board of Commission honoring Sidney Adair Mitchell. Whereas Sidney Adair Mitchell, age 14, competed in the youth's 13 to 17, 59 kilo weight class Olympic weightlifting state championship. This meet was held at the Nashville Weightlifting Club on September 25th, 2021, and whereas Sidney won first place in her weight class lifting a combined total of 65 kilos. This total is only two kilos shy of the state record for total weight. And whereas during the snatch portion of competition, Sidney, I'm sorry, lifted 28 kilos, capturing the state record for her age and weight class. And whereas during the clean and jerk portion of the competition, Sidney lifted 37 kilos, which was only three kilos shy from the state record. And now therefore, we have proclaimed on this 18th day of October 2021, that Fintridge County Executive's Office, Fintridge County Board of Commission wish to congratulate Sidney Adair Mitchell on her state record and her first place win at the Nashville Olympic Weightlifting State Championships. Approved Jimmy Johnson, Fintridge County Executive, attested by Marilyn Stevens, Fintridge County Court Clerk. Congratulations. Our second one, and proclamation in the Fintridge County Board of Commission honoring David Adam Wood. Whereas David Adam Wood competed in the 102 kilo weight class Masters Men, age 35 to 39, Olympic Weightlifting State Championship. This meet was held at the Nashville Weightlifting Club on September 25th, 2021, and whereas Adam won first place in his group in weight class, qualifying for nationals for the second time. Adam lifted a combined total of 233 kilos, breaking the previous state record by four kilos. And whereas during the snatch portion of the competition, Adam lifted 103 kilos, capturing the state record by one kilo. And whereas during the clean and jerk portion of the competition, Adam lifted 130 kilos, capturing the state record by six kilos. And I have one question. Adam, how much weight is that in my mind? These kilos, I don't know. 2.2 per pound. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 18th day of October 2021, that the Fintridge County Executive's Office and Board of Commission would like to congratulate David Adam Wood on his, on his third state records, on his three state records and his first place win at the Nashville Olympic Weightlifting State Championship. And be it further proclaimed that the Fintridge County Executive's Office and Fintridge County Board of Commission would like to thank David Adam Wood on his commitment and dedication to improve the overall health and fitness of Fintridge County. Approved by myself, Jimmy Johnson, attested by Marilyn Stevens, Fintridge County Court Clerk. Thank you. All right, next. With Junior Bulldogs, please come forward. Commissioner Rod Williams and Commissioner Kim Davison will present your certificates to it when we get this read. Proclamation in the Board of the Fintridge County Commission recognizing the Fintridge County Junior Bulldogs. Whereas the Junior Bulldogs began the season with focus and commitment and a goal to win the championship. With their hard work and dedication to teamwork, this Junior Bulldog team had a successful season and they claimed the title of 2021 Super Bowl Champions. And whereas the Junior Bulldogs are a nine U football team and had an undefeated record of 9-0 for the 2021 football season. And whereas the Junior Bulldog head coach is Gabe Beatty, with assistant coaches of Cory Collier, Ian Landys, Brad Hayes, Stevie Cooper, and Michael Beatty. And whereas the Junior Bulldogs made the playoffs and the first round, the opponent was Monterey. The Junior Bulldogs won this match with a score of 28-0. And whereas the Junior Bulldogs met Cumberland County Junior Jets as their second round opponent with a score of 19-0. And whereas the Junior Bulldogs headed to the Super Bowl where they found would face White County Warriors. The Junior Bulldogs took the title as 2021 Super Bowl Championship with a score of 37-0. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 18th day of October 2021, that on behalf of the Fintridge County Commission and the Fintridge County Executive's Office, we would like to congratulate the Fintridge County Junior Bulldogs on their Super Bowl Championship. Thank you for putting forth the effort to be involved and active in your community and representing Fintridge County well. Approved by myself, Jimmy Johnson, attested by Marilyn Stevens, Fintridge County Court Clerk. Thank you. Will the Senior Bulldogs please come forward? When all this is over, you're more than welcome to stay or we'll take a moment, let y'all leave with your one you want to do. Fifth District Commissioners Julie Matthews and Larry Cooper will present the proclamation. Proclamation in the Board of Fintridge County Commission recognizing the Fintridge County Senior Bulldogs. Whereas the Senior Bulldogs began the season with focus and commitment and a goal to win the championship. With their hard work and dedication to teamwork, the Senior Bulldog team had a successful season and they climbed, as they claimed, the title of 2021 Super Bowl Champions. And whereas the Senior Bulldogs are a 11-U football team and had a record of 18-1 for the 2021 football season. And whereas the Senior Bulldogs head coach is Dakota Deaton, with assistant coaches of Justin Phillips, Josh Cantrell, and Travis Smith. And whereas the Senior Bulldogs made the playoffs and the first round, the opponent was the Overland County Outlaw. The Senior Bulldogs won this matchup with a score of 35-0. And whereas the Senior Bulldogs met Cumberland County Junior Jets as their second round opponent with a score of 27-6. And whereas the Senior Bulldogs headed to the Super Bowl where they would face Upperman. The Senior Bulldogs took the title as 2021 Super Bowl Championship with a score of 28-12. And now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 18th day of October 2021, that on behalf of the Fintridge County Commission and the Fintridge County Executive's Office, we would like to congratulate the Fintridge County Senior Bulldogs on their Super Bowl Championship. Thank you for putting forth the effort to be involved and active in your community and representing Fintridge County well. Approved by myself, Jimmy Johnson, attested by Marilyn Stevens, Fintridge County Court Clerk. Thank you all very much.
So we can be expecting a high school state championship here in a few years?
So we'll be expecting a high school championship in a few years, hopefully.
Hey, Gabe. Say a story about Gabe. He was out there with the boys last year. I didn't know he was in the world. He didn't know life. In the world, I was free. Put a black foot at the dogs. Yeah. Dogs, yeah, man. I remember coming out there. I was just barking. I lived out there in the regions. I got horns out of my, corner of my left thigh. I couldn't get it. I loved hunting. Got the scope up and I put it in there and he just went. He didn't mark himself. He even killed a deer. He went down there to haul it, probably 50 yards from me. He got down there, he just took that gun.
I hope when these boys get up to our house, we'll be done there for a house.
That's what Rod was asking there.
We'll remember this day.
Yep. Appreciate it, Gabe. That's what they was telling me.
Big feet of gunpowder, kid. Big feet gunpowder, kid.
Why didn't you bring the big trophy in here, man?
Hi, Gabe.
Thank you, thank you. We'll have to get a couple more before we're done.
Hey, Gabe. Gabe. You got a big one. You got a big one lined up for me? Oh, I'd say you got one lined up. I've known this shady a long time.
Yeah, Michael Beatty.
Yeah. I think he's, does he work for Last Star or something now? I think so. I think that's it. Town hall meeting.
All right, we'll continue at this time. Item number 10. Consideration of approval of Shay Wright to the Fintridge County Industrial Development Board to fill the remaining term of Mark Norman. This term will end July 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Second by Commissioner Rod Williams. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise, motion passes. Item number 11, consideration of approval of acknowledgement of the Fintridge County Report on Debt Obligation. Tyler, would you like to get that there just for a minute, second?
This just has to be recognized by the Fintridge County Commission after our debt issuance, that we done with Cumberland Securities.
Make motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, please, Marilyn.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
10-4, none against.
10-4, none against. Motion passes. Item number 12. Acknowledgement of Budget Award Certificate from the State Comptroller's Office awarded to Fintridge County in recognition of townly adoption of a balanced budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021. We did get a certificate here. We have a copy of it. And I believe we have a letter also with it. It says, uh, this is from the Comptroller's Office. It says, "We're pleased to present you with the enclosed certificate recognizing the hard work and commitment of your local officials, including budget and finance staff, to operate your government with a sound financial plan. This certificate is being awarded based upon the following criteria. Your budget was adopted on or before the fiscal year end. Your budget was filed with our office within 15 days of adoption. No issues or concerns were raised during our review of the budget and your local government is not currently under the oversight of the Water and Wastewater Financial Board or Utility Management Review Board. Thank you for your contribution to making government work better. We recognize the importance of managing public finances in a responsible manner and encourage local officials to keep up the good work. As always, please feel free to reach out to your financial analyst or contact our main office at the phone number given. Yours truly, Jason E. Mumpire, Betsy Notts, Local Government Finance Director." That's, I think there was less than 10 in the state, I'm gonna say.
It was typically between 10 to 15 a year.
So we certainly appreciate all the offices, the office holders for getting this in. Appreciate the commission, uh, for their, uh, hard work in this and getting this passed and while all is done.
I'll make a motion to accept with thanks to Tyler and the finance department's help.
Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number 13 is consideration of some approvals of the following budget amendments. Board of Education Appalachian Rural Talent Initiative Grant in the amount of $5,500. Do I hear a motion on that? It's in your paper. Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes, second by?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
10-4, none against.
10-4, none against. Motion passes. The next one is the senior senator. There are regular donations of $539.55.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
10-4, none against.
10-4, none against. That motion passes also. The next one is a, uh, South Fintridge and Kirby Johnson Park Maintenance Personnel in the amount of figures you see there, but that there is wrong. That is my fault because, uh, the other half of that was already in the budget for next year. And what the question was is, was workforce development, was there money still going to be there? Talked with them last week. Ms. Becky Hall said that it would be there through June, so it's already in the budget. So what that figure out there should say is $9,712. And Mr. Roy is, and at this time, he is taking care of the park over here. Roughly 20 hours a week. That is paid through workforce development, workforce development. And as everyone, I believe it's been over there, I can see, he's doing a pretty good job of it. He takes care of all the concessions and all the cleanliness of that, the wipe downs of that for COVID stuff and such. And then this week, he's over there taking down the fence, the fence that was approved to, to do. So he's, he's gonna, he'll be there. But, and he'll, he works over there roughly seven months, eight months, nine months, nine months, eight, not eight or nine months out of the year. But right now that is covered with workforce development. The, this part here we're putting in, this will be for someone to, uh, do the bathrooms and such, up to, uh, three to four hours a day at the South Fintridge Park. Hopefully, uh, we can find someone to work because it's been advertised before through the park out there. They have trouble getting someone. Our maintenance people go out there now on Mondays and Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. No one goes out there on the weekends. And they're spending roughly 15, 16 hours out there a week themselves. And it's taking them, uh, takes them away from what they should be doing in the maintenance of buildings and the different things. They have a pretty good size list that they do. But this also, someone being there will, uh, we believe in the park board out there now at this time believes that it'll take care of a lot of, uh, someone being there on site four hours a day, five days a week, will, uh, help prevent a lot of destruction that we have out there. We, we do have quite a bit. But that there is it. Uh, like I said, no one, if someone has a, uh, something on Saturday, there's no one there to take the trash out or whatever for someone has it rented the next day. And they are now out there. Now they've moved the soccer. The Jamestown Soccer, it is out there now all the time. They have several, several kids playing soccer out there this time. And that being said, they appreciate the benches that y'all helped to buy to put out there for seating. But that there is the spill on that right there and, uh, it'll put someone out there five days a week, four hours a day. It'll probably be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday out there. So hopefully, uh, we can do that, but it'll be left up to y'all. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve and ask a question. Has it been posted in the paper?
It's not yet because we couldn't do nothing until we get something from the, from the commission. Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding, second by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Is there any further discussion to this?
In the amount of $9,712.
$9,712.
Are we posting this position anywhere else other than the papers?
Well, it'll be on the radio and it'll be, uh, hopefully for, I mean, I'm hoping somebody in the county will apply for it, but we can put it wherever y'all advise the budget. That won't be no, we don't face it.
It says hire two part-time workers. Is that?
No, that there's just, that was my fault there. Uh, we have one already at Kirby Johnson.
So just one at Kirby Johnson that we have plus one at South.
It's $9,712 because workforce development right now is carrying the one over here at the park. And their money's supposed to run through, uh, their money's supposed to run through June of next year. And so that there's why that changed and y'all have already budgeted enough money to carry it if they didn't for next year. But anyway, they need to get someone out there.
So hire the extra person for South Fintridge Park, yeah, fund balance.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, Marilyn.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
10-4, none against.
10-4, none against. And another site too that, uh, South Fintridge Park regular meeting will be, is on the first Tuesday night. And they would like for who could attend if you wanted to to come out in November because what they will be doing, uh, they will be dissolving their board. There'll be some of them want to stay on as a county board on it. But, uh, they will be dissolving their board because they've been there for like, I don't know, Leon, Lester, Leslie. I mean, well, they've been there for 30, 35 years. Some of them have been from the get-go and it's, uh, there says it's time, you know, they did. And it's, there says this time, you know, they did, some of them have actually moved out of town. But some of y'all would appreciate, I'm gonna be going, but it's on November 6th, November the, first Tuesday of November, and it will be, that'll be the second, and that there will be at 6:00 PM out there. Civil Defense in the amount of $700. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Larry, did you make it, Larry? Yes. Motion by Larry Cooper to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion? Roll call, please, Marilyn.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Ten, four, one, against, motion passes. The next one is Ventress County Agricultural Pavilion Budget, set up in the amount of Tyler, would you want to address anything to that?
This is set up to start paying, and part of this will reimburse, like that land and the architect fee will reimburse Fund 101 for what we've already spent on that project. I might have to bring one back to you for the issuance cost, once I get that nailed down. When the auditor gets here, she'll help me lay out the issuance cost because we have to actually show that run through our budget. But we don't ever actually see that portion on here, so, but this, this is the portion of the budget for the project amount.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes, second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Ten, four, none, against.
Ten, four, none, against, motion passes. And the last one is Highway Capital Projects Fund, $176,000, in the amount of $800,553.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Against.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, against.
Nine, four, one, against, motion passes. And one more thing, and any other business I had down here, Saturday at 10:00 AM, there'll be a meeting with some of the Wilder residents over there about their forming of a fire department. We met with them once, met with them two times over there. So anybody wants to go over, it'll be right there in the middle of the, of the area. Turn off there when you cross the bridge, first road to the right, and just keep on going straight.
So it was this Saturday?
This Saturday at 10:00 AM, if anybody wants to come over there. Turn off the road to the right, there up there, that road, goes in there, that big old statue, Sasquatch or somebody's standing in there, I don't know who it is. But anyway, anybody have anything else?
Jimmy, I do, just tonight is seeing all the youth here, I think that was so encouraging for us and people in the county to see that. So, and there's a lot of people that give a lot of their time to coach and to work with those kids, and, you know, just very thankful we have that. And something that I think as the Commission, we might look at, the practice field they use at York Elementary could use some improvement. They need a storage building out there and hopefully to expand the field. So as we possibly are getting some more COVID money that may be coming in, I'm hoping that we can look at doing something there and improving that. Because again, just seeing those kids here and everything, I think we never go wrong when we invest in our youth. So I just hope that we can take this and carry it forward and maybe do some more for that. So like I said, the coaches that invest so much and the parents that are there with these kids, you just don't know how much that's appreciated, and, you know, that's the future of Ventress County, and so we wanna support.
In addition to that, we have spoken with some of the school board members and such, and spoken to Mr. Jones about that, and hopefully with some of their funds they've been getting this lately, they'll be able to hopefully be able to do something up there to help that. And hoping, and told them that, we was hoping and we thought that they would do some of it, that the county might wanna do some of it also.
And we can work with them.
The possibility, work together with it on it.
That's it, because that's what, how we move forward as a county. If we work together and everybody tries to go in the right direction, we just keep getting better. So hopefully, we can do something there.
One other thing, real quickly, like I've had this down there, and my name is to mention this up. Veteran Service Officer, Mr. Jeff Tenshy brought this in to me. And we now have a population in our veterans of 1,306. This was in year 20, we're up to 1,306. And our monies that are coming in, the total expenditure that comes through his office is, last year, it was $15,483,000. So this year, it is up almost a million dollars. It's up in 20, it was up to $16,424,000. So we all know Jeff, Jeff, Jeff I believe does an excellent job down there, and he studies a lot about it. He goes to all these meetings that he has to go to. Just wanted to bring out your attention that as far as our veterans here in the county, their expenditures that they, are there to get paid in from the government is a little, is a little over $16 million, about $500,000, so that's really good. Anything else from anyone?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Benny Hughes, the juror, second by Mr. Larry Cooper. Thank y'all, appreciate y'all.
Four.
Four.
All four.
Again.
Anybody not staying stated, turn the lights out.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Ventress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.